Georgetown Landings, a nice area.
Good evening and welcome to the February 22nd, 2023 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, Chair of the Planning Board. As this is a hybrid meeting involving both in-person and remote participants, as you know, I have to read this following statement into the record. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to the Acts of 20, Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold the public meeting on Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023, at 5:30 PM. In the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, 02664. The public is welcome to attend via remote access, provided on the meeting agenda posted on the town website, and under the Agendas and Minutes tab, selecting Planning Board. I'd like to begin by taking roll call. Brad Goodwin.
Present.
Susan Britta. Will Rubenstein.
Present.
Chris Vincent.
Here.
Jim Saban.
Present.
Ken Smith.
Present.
Joanne Crowley, present. With that, I will call the meeting to order since we have a quorum, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you for, members of the public, for joining us. Will, help me again, is anyone on board?
There's a couple folks.
Yeah, as well remotely. We appreciate your, your time, and sometimes your patience.
Sometimes.
Again, this evening, we're discussing the accessory apartment bylaw amendment. Since our last meeting, Kathy Williams, our town planner, has provided us with draft number seven, then subsequently updated by draft number eight yesterday, which incorporates preliminary comments and some questions of, by our town council. I would ask Kathy to take us through this latest draft, the status of new maps. We had talked about new maps, additional information that we received about affordable units through Mary Wagon. We have additional information from the building commissioner that we received today, I guess, and then the status of any continuing legal questions that our town council has. So I'd like to turn it over to you, Kathy, if that's okay.
Sure, sounds, sounds good. We did receive about 12 written comments that you got in either in your packet and/or supplemental printed out for, for you. The vast majority of the comments, just to make it clear, were related to postponing to the fall, more public engagement, more special permits, concerns about impacts about density, parking, and quality of life, and then one comment about creating a master plan prior to, oh, there's Susan, prior to making any determinations. And there was also a letter in support of by right accessory apartments. So what you have in front of you, anything that's highlighted in blue and yellow, those are comments that were added by, by town council. Just note that Susan Britta has attended, arrived at the meeting, and so we have a full, a full board this evening. The first comment there in red was a comment actually from Susan about just moving that phrase while protecting the character and appearance and property values of single-family residential neighborhoods to the end of that first line item. And number two, the, address the need for additional year-round rental housing units was added by town council. I think the biggest thing that came out of town council's edit was his concerns that we, he does not believe that we can not allow for people to request dimensional variance. So our comment there of accessory apartments are not eligible for variances from these provisions, he doesn't think it's legal for us to, to allow that, especially with regard to dimensional requirements. So I think that accessory apartments are not eligible for variances from these provisions is something that would probably end up having to be eliminated. Having a, having to get a variance, obviously, is, is more difficult than special permit, and you have to have very specific criteria as to why you get a variance. I think I've noticed more, more frequently, the ZBA is more reticent to give variances than they happen in the past. And even, I do know that recently, a family-related apartment was before them for over the 800 square feet, I think it was like 1,100 square feet, and they made them reduce it down and have only storage in that extra area. So I think they are being more cognizant of, of what's actually in the bylaw and not necessarily allowing for variances. Town Council did add the word with regard to accessory apartments being a complete and separate, and shall include independent sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities. I did send around an email that I received from the housing inspector indicating that the sanitary code does require a stove, so that's something that we do need to keep in, in the bylaw that a stove is, is required. The, the item there, 3A, that was something that was decided by the board at the last meeting to, to identify two different lot sizes, depending on whether you're having a studio or, and a one-bedroom, or whether you're having a two-bedroom. So this change would say studios and one-bedrooms need to have a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, and two-bedrooms need to have a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet.
Hey Kathy?
Yeah?
If I may?
Sure.
Any chance of taking out that word hood after stove? Because you have to follow manufacturer's requirements, and they may not require a hood. I just don't want someone to get hung up and have to...
Some stoves have downdrafts.
Right, right, right.
Wow.
Just to note.
So like if it's a stove in the center island, for example, they don't have a hood over above, they have a downdraft on the stove that sucks the stuff down enough.
Geniuses, geniuses are like that.
Geniuses have a good one.
Geniuses have the, the draft in the center of the, of the cooktop.
Is that something where we could say, or a hood, or downdraft? I mean, do we want to...
Take out the hood. Mr. Stove, sink with stove.
Sorry, I didn't have a final say on that.
Give her this a thousand miles.
As long as that's, as long as that's fine by the sanitary code and, and by plumbing and electrical and all, all the people that be, we can certainly look into that.
Okay, so checking, yes.
Should, should we go piece by piece through, so Kathy just indicated comments from town council with regards to the language, accessory apartments are not eligible for variance from these provisions. Should we address that now, or do we want to have her go through everything and then come back to everything? It sounds to me like town council wants us to strike that, is that?
Oh, yes, that is, it's out, as, as per town council. Not legal.
Once the word, once that line is struck, accessory apartments are going to have to follow these three provisions right here.
Okay.
All accessory apartments shall adhere to the following minimum requirements, and then the list.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure we understand.
You're not meeting those, you would need to get a variance.
Got it.
Right.
Okay, so the blue is suggestions to be eliminated?
No, blue is what was highlighted by town council when he wrote his comment to the right.
And some are suggestions for elimination, and some are suggestions for edits, and some are suggestions for thoughts.
Questions. I probably should have deleted that, because I do think it needs to go.
So, to be clear, we're, we're recommending removal of the sentence, accessory apartments are not eligible for variance from these provisions.
Correct.
And so the practical effect of that is, they are now eligible for variances?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Which are very difficult to get.
But it doesn't matter, they're eligible.
Yeah, yeah.
However difficult to get.
Good question, Mr. Saban, thank you for the process aspect of this. Do you want to talk about the word independent? We all okay with that? And then, all of the next section is highlighted by, essentially by town council.
It was just the question, I don't think he had any edits there, except for number E. I'm sorry. Where he basically recommended that we modify E to say, "The expansion to pre-existing non-conforming structures for an accessory apartment must meet the setback requirements of Section 203.5," because all the dimensional requirements also include like lot size and that type of thing. And that's what we really meant, was the setback requirements. Is that good?
Good.
Okay. So, no changes to four. Number five, town council said, "What about detached units?" Number five is talking about making the accessory apartment look as close as possible to a single-family residence and being consistent with the design of the principal, single-family dwelling. I added a plural to the buildings part to be sure that that encompasses detached as well as those being attached. I don't know if anyone had any, didn't have a major issue with it, he just wanted to bring it up.
Question there, Kathy, the S refers to town council's comment that it would be, the detached building obviously would be another building.
Right, so you may have multiple buildings on your property, and you want them all to look like a single-family residence.
Did you, is he satisfied with the addition of the S?
Yeah.
Okay.
Number six, those are edits from the last meeting, and again, it's relating the maximum unit size to the size of the accessory apartment. It retains that the maximum number can be two bedrooms, but the studio and one-bedroom accessory apartments shall meet the maximum habitable floor area is not less than 50% or a maximum of 800 square feet, whichever is smaller. For two bedrooms, you can go up to the 900 square feet, but also saying regardless of the habitable floor area, no accessory apartment will be less than 350 square feet. So it's giving the different ranges.
Is it not literally correct, what's the word I'm looking at? Isn't it not proper to use the word two and not the number two? I see you changed it the other way around, but isn't it the other way?
Starting a sentence, you should write it out.
Strunk and White would say, it should be spelled, and then in parentheses after it, it should be the number, if it's less than 10.
Less than 10, right.
Love Strunk and White.
I remember the less than 10.
Strunk and White, come on.
But then you throw the hyphen in there, it makes it really, then, then it's a party. I would just as soon leave it as is, Madam Chair, and not put the actual numeral in there.
I'm, I'm impressed.
I think the hyphen blows up the whole.
We have something really good in common, besides planning board. All right.
I agree with my colleague that if we could leave the word two, might be a smart thing to do.
Either we're always writing out two and one, or we're not. The only reason the next sentence where I say two-bedroom accessory apartments is because you don't start a sentence with a number.
Right.
So that's the reason it's spelled out there. I think the two catches your eye, and you notice it more readily than it's spelled out.
Well, like in number seven, you do it the other way, because it's not starting a sentence.
Because I can't do a two-bedroom, is it, is like almost like...
It's the hyphen, it's also the hyphen.
It's one meaning together.
Numbers below 10 should always be spelled out. Correct?
I'm sorry?
Numbers below 10 should always be spelled out.
Yeah.
Isn't that correct? Okay.
I'm just wondering, in, in the zoning bylaw, Kathy, I mean, there are numbers all over the place, I'm sure.
Are we really hanging up on this?
Yeah, we shouldn't be.
I think two-bedroom is a word unto itself.
It is.
It's a phrase unto itself. It's not identifying a number.
It is. Agreed.
I would prefer to leave it numbered unless it's the start of a sentence where I don't want to start it with a number.
Leave it numbered, Kathy.
That's fine.
I don't disagree with your grammar. I am the daughter of an English teacher as well.
And we'll, we'll call Strunk and tell them that the Yarmouth Book Planning Board doesn't follow their rules. We don't have to.
Continue, Kathy.
Number seven was also from the meeting last time. It also was just a clarification, I think the intent still stays the same, is that you need to have two off-street parking spaces for the main premises and two off-street parking spaces for the accessory apartment, and there shall be no parking in existing green spaces in front of the principal dwelling unit, and no expansion of parking into green spaces, green space areas in front of the principal dwelling unit. I think that's clear. Keep going unless somebody says otherwise. Whoops. Number 10, I thought that was a nice little ad by town council saying, you know, if the principal structure will then be designated as the accessory apartment, for the purposes of this bylaw, just making it clear, it's just associated with, with this bylaw. Why it does not?
Wow, a whole page of nothing.
Just means it was perfect.
Right. It's good to have...
It just means he didn't have any legal edits. So, so the 407.5.1 documentation, we had agreed that it would be having a date for the notarized affidavit to be submitted to the building department, and we pick January 31st of each year.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Saban?
I meant to ask him when he was here. So if we're asking for a January 31st date, that's going to inundate the building department in January with a bunch of these applications?
Not an application, it's an affidavit that they scan and put into the file.
Affidavit, okay. So that's not going to overwhelm them in any way.
I don't think so. I think if you don't set a date, and it's like, it almost helps them to remember, oh, wait a minute, I haven't gotten anything, it's January, and we haven't received anything yet. I mean, same thing in the stormwater regulations, you're required to do something, and they say by September of every year, so then you kind of know in your mind that you have to do something.
I'm more thinking of the, the workload of staff than...
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not an actual application, it's simply, oh, here it is for blank and blank, the probably will check it off in their whatever, and then file it for laser fiche, so they have documentation that it's done.
I'm good.
Number two there, just a minor edit to say additional user fees in the amount set by the Board of Selectment payable at date of inspection. He did make a nice modification, I thought, in 407.5.4, and I did run this by Mark, and he had no issues. Failure to pass inspection or submit annual affidavits may be cause for the building commissioner to require cessation of the accessory apartment use and removal of the blank, blank, blank. I thought that made a nice, clear, clearer statement.
May I ask a, a question?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Vincent.
Can someone explain to me what the annual affidavit is?
Yep, there's two, there's actually two things that would be submitted. If you are renting it, you're just saying, you're going to identify to the building department, I'm either, the principal dwelling unit is my accessory apartment, or vice versa, identify that you're renting it, so they know, to make sure that you're getting your rental certificate over at the health department, and also to provide that year lease, so that we're actually solving the problem that we have of not having enough year-round rentals. And then, if you're not renting it out because it's being used for a family member, we just want to know, because it gets inspected differently. It doesn't need a rental certificate, and it gets inspected by the building department every two years.
Okay, so it's just a very simple one-page document?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This last edit here on three, this is related to existing family accessory apartments. If you want to convert your existing family-related to, to the new bylaw, you can do that through special permit, as long as you're not increasing the size of the accessory apartment. And then, town council suggested, upon issuance of a special permit, any previously filed covenants shall be released with an appropriate recording at the Barnstable Registry of Deeds. There are covenants on the property for the special permit, separate from the special permit, that get registered at the Registry of Deeds. I asked him, I go, "Could we just make that like part of the, the new special permit?" And he said he felt that it really needed to be a separate document. He didn't see it as being a particularly big deal, you're going to have to record the special permit anyway, and he can work up type, a type of document for that. It's just there's something at the town, at the registry now, saying it has to be family-related, and if you're changing it and converting to it not needing to be, we just want to make sure that that gets taken off the title, so there's no future, you know, problems, as you can imagine. And then, it's basically the same exact thing related to the affordable apartments, but just taking away the covenants and any affordable, affordable housing restrictions. I did send to you, Mary Wagon did, did do all that great research, I guess there was 11 permits that were issued for affordable accessory apartments over all of time and creation. Eight of the units are currently inactive, only three of them are active right now. None of them have any type of regulatory agreement or restrictive covenant recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So all of the limitations with regard to income eligibility and rental rates limitations are part of, a reference in the special permit that references Section 407. So I think we might need to, as we get further, keep some of that information about rents and income eligibility in there, should, should these transfer without having been converted. What this is telling us is, this is not going to be a big problem. There's three of them now, none of them have the more elaborate restrictive covenant on them that might need to be released from the Board of Selectment or something like that. It would be a relatively simple thing, and that's what kind of this is referencing when you, when you convert it, we need to make sure that that gets taken away.
Kathy, but should they have had?
I...
The documentation, do we, do we know if they're, they're...
I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's water under the bridge at this particular point. I think some of them are, none of them were ever on the SHI, the subsidized housing inventory. I believe one of them was like limited to a single occupancy, which I'm not sure was eligible, might have been smaller than an eligible one, and then another one, I think was like more of a work, live thing, where someone was helping somebody out by living in the apartment, but helping them out kind of situation, so. So, transfer upon sale, town council didn't have any issues with, with number one. Where we left it with transfer upon sale for the family-related and also the affordable, was he wanted me to send him the documentation, what was an example of a covenant for a family-related and, and the restrictions for the affordable. We sent all of this information off to town council, I don't know whether he wants to make any edits here, he was hoping to simplify the language, and I think what he was hopefully, really hoping to, to simplify was the language here with regard to the affordable, with the maximum rents permitted, and the guidelines for income eligibility. He was concerned that this was going to be conflicting with whatever they had in their regulatory agreement, but since there is no regulatory agreement, we need to define what these are somewhere for those three that are still hanging out there, because they are still have some income limitations on them, even if they don't have it, a regulatory agreement, because they have a special permit that says you're an affordable, and you need to meet these, these affordability requirements.
So he, town council, and the firm are still looking at these.
Correct.
And, just, it, it sounds like we could have, we, we may have family-related and affordable apartments on our register in addition to, what will I call them, the, we don't care who your tenant is, accessory apartments. So we'll have three kinds of, of accessible units, probably for a while, until people convert. And this whole here is kind of what the exit ramp might be for someone who wants to convert? Am I reading that rightly, correctly?
Well, there's two things. Number 407.6 is, if you still own it, this is your exit ramp.
Okay, that, okay, I'm sorry.
If you haven't done anything and you're selling it, I know that what had been agreed to was that new accessory apartments would transfer upon sale, I know that Susan still had some issues with that, but that the old ones would follow the old rules, which are in the current bylaw now, which is kind of what, what this is reflecting right now. I think eventually, they probably would all convert over to just a regular one, so it would allow people more flexibility, but maybe people are perfectly fine. They only wanted it for the family, when that situation no longer exists, they don't need it. So they would...
May I ask a question?
Of course, Mr. Vincent.
So, the special permit, let's say I went out and I'm buying a house, it has an accessory apartment, it's been, has a special permit, and then it gets sold to me, and it's my choice now, because that special permit now has terminated, and I can either have it be reinstated, or I can just let it slide. So let's say I decide to let it slide, so now I have a, an accessory apartment, it's no longer being inspected, to see who's living there. So I think that's a potential problem.
I think that's why we're going to retain the every two years, because that's when a lot of things get caught, when they go and they do the inspection every two years, then they would find out, wait a minute, sir, you're no longer meeting your...
So am I, I'm understanding that that inspection's going to be part of the deed? Right, or, because the special permit goes away, and the only half of the accessory apartment only has to adhere this bylaw, it's, it's saying that it goes away, right? Says it terminates upon the sale of the property.
The existing family-related right now, the way it says, is that the family-related accessory apartment shall terminate upon sale of the property or transfer of title to the dwelling unless the new owner files on the subject property a new declaration of covenants at the Barnstable Registry of Deeds within 45 days, basically agreeing to the prior restrictions of the special permit.
But I'm saying, he may, but he doesn't have to.
Well, if no action is taken by the new owner in 45 days...
The special permit goes away?
Yes.
And now he has an accessory apartment on his property?
An illegal accessory apartment on his property.
You've just made him, you're forcing him into an illegality.
Or you're forcing him to come before the zoning board, either adhere to this, take out the aspect of it that makes it an accessory apartment, and/or apply through a special permit for a new accessory apartment.
But say, so he doesn't...
Or she.
Or she, the person, does not want to, I don't, I'm, I'm still a little confused here.
Can I, can I jump in?
Please.
So, I'm sorry, thank you, bye. So, Person A has a family-related unit and sells to Person B. Person B does not have a family member to put in that family-related unit, and therefore does not wish to continue with that. So when that two-year clock comes up, the town is then going to go to inspect, and they're going to say, "You can't have a stove in there because you don't have a family-related apartment anymore."
Okay.
You'll have to remove the stove. I think if we go back and we look under, I think it's three that talks about enforcement, what they actually do.
What section was it?
It's number three on the top of page six. That sort of continues about what happens after the 45 days expires.
What's the chapter forty?
Sorry, 407.723.
Next page.
Right at the top of the, yeah, the top of the next page, it says, "Records and inspection shall apply," which is what Jim is saying, they'll get, they'll get, there will be a period of time, Chris, like you're saying, where there will be technically an illegality, but it will be caught by this at some point, within the two-year timeframe, whenever the clock starts.
I just...
Sorry, does that make sense?
It does, because they get to remove it.
I'm not saying it's perfect, but that is the way to handle it.
That's what I wanted, I wanted some kind of a protection against that for the town, and that's it right there, so thank you.
And it's only illegal if he decides to use it. If he leaves it vacant, it's fine.
It's correct.
It's only if he decides to use it, do you get into these situations about timeframes and what you have to do. You can keep it there and not use it at all. And then if you decide to use it, you know, follow the process, but you're right, there's no...
If you decide to use it again, you'd have to go for another special, a new special permit.
Correct.
That's, that's great.
I think even if you're not using it and you were inspected, they would make you remove stuff.
Yes.
If you don't have a tenant, if you don't have, if you don't have a family.
Yeah.
Stuff's still got to come out of there. Okay, great.
But we are still waiting for some additional input from town council on that, on those last highlighted items, 407.7.2 and .3.
Okay.
May I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
So what is the inventory? Do we know what the current, in other words, we know there's three current active affordable apartments, right, according to the chart from Mary Wagon. Do we have a sense of what the census or the inventory is in this category?
The, the family-related?
Yeah.
About 52.
Okay, so I'm just saying, I just want to point out that this is a bigger bucket of potential stuff, as opposed to the previous one we were just talking about.
I think you provided us with a list of, in our last meeting of the...
Those were all the special permits that had been issued, and not all of them had been enacted. I think there's 52 active, there's probably another 20 or so that are inactive, that they don't, they took stuff out, that the family member moved or whatever.
So then, this could be, so 407.73 could affect less than 52, if what I just heard you is correct.
407.7.3 would affect the three, because it's the affordable, the 7.2 would affect up to 52, which are the active.
Ah, my apologies, thank you. But I knew there were two different sized buckets, thank you for clarifying which one is which.
So we still have some outstanding requests to town council on aspects of this amendment that hopefully will receive at some point in the near future. Kathy, you only got these comments, I think, this week, yesterday, and incorporated them into draft eight yesterday, so we are still waiting for important comments from town council. So why don't we go through the other information that, the status of some other things? Kathy, you had sent us some notes, we have a memorandum from the building commissioner, do you want to review that for us?
I think a lot of people talk about enforcement and, and issues with enforcement, and Mark Grills, the building commissioner and director of municipal inspections, developed a memo, basically for the file, to document all the 2022 enforcement, the process and the volume that he saw. It kind of goes through the outlines of process of enforcement, there's the original, original written complaint that's received by somebody typically, sometimes... Sometimes it happens to be, you know, staff driving by a site, but usually it's, it's coming from someone from the public. Then they need to go out and visit the site to evaluate whether it's a valid complaint, whether it really actually is a violation or not. And then you need to notify the complaint and after review, either in writing or verbally. And he does note that many complaints are determined not to actually be violations of codes or bylaws, but you still have to go out and go to that site visit and, and look at that. Then the property owner is sent a notification of violations to let them know. And it's followed, and it can be followed up with meetings in viol, with the violators. If you get no response, they send out a second notice of violation with a warning ticket, which isn't really a ticket-ticket, but it's like a warning ticket to let you know, we really mean business. And then the third notice of violation includes tickets with applicable fines. And that's usually when people come in and they have that conversation.
Excuse me, Kathy, could we just take a moment to talk about the fines? Since, do you know what they are?
They're three, they can be $300 a day, and per violation, per day.
Okay, thank you.
So if you have multiple violations, it could be 900, if you have three violations, it could be $900 a day, again and again and again.
Thank you.
Every day they don't fix it.
They, they don't obviously try to be abusive like that. They just, but they do want to get people's attention, and usually a $300 or $600 ticket does that, and then people come in.
Kathy, where does the money go? Does it go into the general fund?
Um, I, I don't, that's a good question. I would think it would go into the general fund, as all permit fees go into the general fund.
Maybe we could support having Mark keep that money so that he could hire someone to.
Well, he just got approval to hire a new person.
It's like the police with the, where was it? I think if he had an opportunity to generate cash from his own program and retain it to hire, and restrict the use of that cash to hire more, more personnel, that would be something we, you know.
That's a great idea. That's for the selectmen to consider, though, not this board, but that's a great idea.
If it comes up again, we should really discuss it.
I do believe in the justification that they provide for the inspector this year and for last year. My understanding is, a companion document there is an assessment of the, the financial benefits of having an additional, you know, hands and feet.
Oh, sure.
And they attribute some ability to, to capture more revenue. And that revenue hopefully will more than offset the costs of the inspector, the fully loaded costs of the inspector, whether it's for Mark or for the health department. That was my understanding when I spoke off the record with Mark, is that he had to kind of prove that there's money to be made here, essentially, to support the additional.
Even a very minor increase in building permits fees would compensate for a, considering the sheer volume of permits that they see, even a small increase would, would compensate for the cost of another inspector. I believe it's another inspector, and then we have a.
List to build.
Linda Cipro came back, back part-time to work in the building department, which is great, because she can, boots on the ground immediately, because she used to work in that department for many, 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 many years. So that's very helpful as well.
I have, I have just a broader question, Kathy. These are violations that are, the, the boat isn't behind the, the main house frontage. It's in the front yard.
It could be something like that.
It's, it's, these are all kinds of violations, not just ones that are related to apartments or the dwelling.
Oh, correct. I mean, it could be absolutely anything.
Total to the building department.
This is everything that the building department looks at, okay. Thank you.
That's a lot, it's one a day.
It's a lot. So, so if there's no, and there's always those tricky ones, which take a lot of time to resolve. A lot of times, I think most people are like, what? Oh, I didn't know. And then they fix it, and that's the end of it. So if they don't get any response to that violation and fines, the tickets, we now have housing court in New Bedford, which I think, so you can assign a court date in the building code. Also, if it's a building code violation, go to the building code appeals board for building code violations, or district court for general bylaw violations. If it's a general bylaw, it's a different plate. Depends on what they're not meeting. The building department does a lot more than just enforce for us. They enforce for Old Kings Highway. They also do some enforcement for conservation with stormwater. So there, there's a lot of other things that they do besides zoning violations. So in 2022, they received 278 complaints. 93 of them at this time had, had at least one notification sent. 22 were under review, requiring a site visit for, for verification. 49 were related to the Y P D and the fire department, and they were really life safety priorities. And, and most of those 49 had been resolved because they were of a life safety issue. They also issued 38 stop-work building or zoning violations. And then they basically resolved 76 of the complaints and violations were resolved in 2022. So there is enforcement going on, and it's, you know, I think it's to the credit of the building department that they are able to move forward with all of these things, in addition to meeting all of their building code statutory requirements for issuing permits within this certain timeframe.
Kathy, and one thing that Mark always emphasizes is that citizens have to call. If he doesn't know something's in violation, he can't enforce it. So when you hear citizens say things aren't enforced, they may not be enforced because he doesn't know about it. So he always encourages people to call. And then the process starts, you know, they go out and look and all that kind of stuff. But, but, you know, they're, I, I agree that they, there is some undue criticism of the building department because they don't enforce things, kind of like the police department. If you don't call the police department and say something's going on, they kind of go and enforce it. So, so they do it, I think they do a very good job with what they have. But a critical element is citizen participation. And so if people think something's a violation, call them, and he will do something about it.
What's that new line? When you see something, say something?
Next, Kathy, on my list of follow-ups that we had talked about were the maps.
Yes.
And I note that in your minutes, you captured kind of where we were on that, that we would show maps that have lot sizes less than 10, 10 to 1499, and 15,000 and over for two-bedroom accessory apartments, as well as, I think, Mr. Rubenstein's suggestion, the number of lots and the percentages.
From that chart we got a month ago.
On one chart. So can you bring us up, I know you've probably started that process.
Yes, since last week. With the holiday on Monday.
Since four days ago.
Yeah, right. I do agree, I know that Chris, Chris Greeley had pointed out some inconsistencies in the mapping, and I also noted, noticed that as well. There's some lots that I know have a residential dwelling unit on it, but it wasn't colored in any particular way. So what I've done is I've tried to reach out, I've reached out to assessing, and Bruce, to schedule a meeting so that we can make sure that we're hitting the right assessing codes, so that whatever they come up with for their table equals what is being represented in the map. And that may change the numbers a little bit. I think that the numbers that we had before were a good general idea, that kind of, in the mapping gives you a general idea of where we stood. But I think if we're going to move forward with this to the public, I think we need to be as accurate as possible. So we need to have that meeting and then see what we can do to, to correct those maps. This has a lot to do with assessing and codes and G I S that I am unfamiliar with, but we're hoping to have a meeting next week.
I can tell you every one of them if you want to know.
Maybe we should have you come to the meeting. So I am, I are working on that. It's going to take a little bit of time, and I have to work into other people's schedules as well.
Anything else, Kathy, on the accessory apartment amendment that you wanted to share with us tonight? You mentioned the letters. We received more today, right?
We received, you had three in your packet and then nine that were sent today, and you have copies of all of them.
Okay, yes, okay.
There.
So we, we're up against a bit of a deadline here now. We, if we so are, if we're so inclined, Kathy would need to be able to create a, a, a release for the newspapers tomorrow on this. And am I, do I have that right? February 23rd would have to be the posting date for a March 15th public hearing. Based on the information we've heard from Kathy tonight, I'd like to get the sense of the board as to what any, any, any one of us and all of us really need to chime in here think our best next steps are.
Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Smith.
I'll jump in first. Just based on the information that we have in front of us tonight, and based on where Town Council's at, the discussion about mapping, if we're not ready to present this properly to the general public, I'd be inclined to say, you know, as Brad put it last week, I don't want to put inferior product out. We want to put the best possible product out. And my recommendation at this time would be to hold off presenting this until we have all the information correctly and presentable.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next.
Want to go down the line, or do you want us to jump?
No, anyone, anyone.
Ditto.
Susan.
Ditto. For different, for yours plus additional, you know, reasons. But, but absolutely, I, I think that we want to put the best product forward. I think we could do better. I think there's a few things here that we could, we need more information to make it the best product. And I think we should postpone. And I think the vast majority of the letters that came in, at least recently, were asking for two things, postponement and more citizen engagement. So I don't know how we could go wrong with that, quite frankly. We have an A D U in place. We're going to have a fall meeting, which is the traditional venue for, for zoning amendments. And by the time we get there, hopefully we'll have a consensus document. Right now, we don't even have that. So I think that, I see mistakes happening if we go forward. I see no mistakes happening if we, if we give ourselves a little more time.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rubenstein.
I respectfully don't know if we're not going to make any mistakes, if, if we delay. However, I do agree with Ms. Britta and Mr. Smith. Thank you.
Mr. Vincent.
Yeah, I'm going to disagree. I think it's, we've put a lot of time into this and a lot of thought. We have some smart people on the board. We've heard from the members of the town. From what I've read tonight, it's well thought out, it's well crafted. And I think the people of the town ought to have a right to, to hear it and vote on it. Thank you.
Mr. Goodwin.
I'm torn, Madam Chair, because I agree wholeheartedly with Chris. I hate being a gatekeeper. Even though we're appointed by the selectmen, we're not elected, we work at their behest. We're supposed to move things forward and bring it to the voters, who are the ultimate decision-makers. I think we have an okay product here. I just know it's going to be indefinitely postponed because I don't think people want to deal with it. I will side with the majority of the board and vote to postpone, only for one reason. I think Kathy's being overworked on this, and I don't think we have the time. If we had an assistant town planner like Terry had, Dave Kellogg had Terry, I think we could have made it work. But I don't think, due to what Kathy's got on her plate, I don't think it'll work. What I do want to say on the record is, I don't want to hear one peep out of anybody saying, "We got to kick this down the can, kick this down the road come August," because we haven't done enough outreach, and we haven't done this, and we haven't done that. Because I would be damned if we won't bring it forward in October, whether it's ready or not, because I have seen so many cut-and-paste letters come across my inbox about people who've just cut and pasted what was sent to them and sent it along. Okay, you made your point, but come hell or high water, this is going first. C stands for zoning, but we're going first. There we go. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. And I am of the, of the opinion that the public outreach that's necessary to get our, our fellow neighbors and citizens in Yarmouth involved needs more time and more attention. I'm also concerned about the need for additional legal counsel. And I'm also very concerned about the ability of town resources to be able to dedicate an appropriate amount of time to this in a way that it, it deserves, and that we've worked hard over these past several months to move forward. So if, if, if I may, I'd, I'd like to ask and make a motion.
Madam Chair, do I get a chance to weigh in on this?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, God, help me. Mr. Saban, well, you know.
I think you all know what I'm going to, what I'm going to say.
I am, I am so sorry.
I think it's wonderful that a member of our committee can stimulate a community of neighbors to write a letter to demand that we delay.
Mr. Saban, I'm going to stop you right there.
I'm not done.
I, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you not to go down that route that you're going. There's no, there's no information that I'm aware of that any member of this committee is responsible for any letter. So let's go back and let's rewind.
All right, let me back up. There's been an, an effort by someone in our community to educate a particular neighborhood, and I'm thrilled that they're educating their neighborhood. But to suggest that this committee has not adequately looked at this, and to suggest that we need to put it down the road because it's not been adequately looked at, is just plain false. We have a bylaw that we have worked on for over 20 meetings. This has been discussed back in 2019, 2018, again now, when we had a petition article that was discussed then as well. So the discussion of push it down the road is nothing more than a delay tactic, in my opinion. With regards to our, our town department and staff, I do agree that our town staff has a lot of work to do. But it was requested that she could put this together in one day. I don't know if she can do that. I don't ever want to put bylaws or anything else, decision process for anything in a community based upon the workload of someone. If we have a bylaw that's good, and we don't, and we, I keep hearing this word consensus. Well, to me, consensus is a majority, not one or two people saying no. We seem to have generally a consensus on this bylaw that, and again, I wrote to myself here, what are we lacking? What's the big holdup? We keep hearing, oh, we haven't been talked to, we don't have this, we're arguing about that. Well, what are they? I asked this two weeks, last week. If there's an issue and we don't have consensus, well, please tell me, because I don't want to waste my time all through next summer and into the fall, when nobody's willing to say what their issue is. Well, I know it's been the issue about by right. Well, let's discuss that. But to have the argument to say, oh, let's push it down the road, let's push it down the road, because we haven't talked about it. I'm sitting here, I've been sitting here every week, and I'm willing to talk about it. So when I ask, what is the, what are the objections, and I get silence, that tells me there is no objection. So, or, so I'm willing to work and hear what the objections are, but nobody's saying, oh, well, you know, this is the objection. Okay, by right, let's have a discussion about by right. The three areas of variance that now we're told there cannot be. If that's the issue, let's have that discussion. But to simply say, oh, we haven't had enough discussion, let's push it down the road, is just not accurate. We have had these discussions, and clearly our community knows about it. There are people sitting here tonight, there have been 20, 30 people, we get nine, 10 letters a week. Our community knows that this is going on. Not only have we had these discussions, but I'm willing to bet, matter of fact, I don't even have to bet, I know, the Board of Realtors has had discussions on this subject, housing has had discussions on this subject. It has been discussed and discussed and discussed. So if there's an objection to parts of this bylaw that we're presenting, then let's hear them. But don't tell me we haven't had enough discussion about this. That's just not true. So my thought is, you want to talk about it some more? I think we have a pretty good bylaw, but if there's some issue here, I want to hear it. Let's talk about it. I went, when we started with this, I said, timeout. Let's go through this line by line. If there's an issue, let's hear about it. I have not heard anybody say they've had an objection to anything we've put out today. So if there is, we've, we've talked about it. I don't know if there's a complete agreement, if there's, we require what? 100% vote on it? Or if it's six out of seven, five out of seven, three out of seven? What do you want? To be able to move this forward, but to my line of thinking, these are nothing more than delay tactics. We have a bylaw that we've worked very hard on. We've addressed many of these issues in, in, in great detail. And I truly believe our community knows what the heck we're doing. So it's not like we're doing this in a vacuum. And they know, they've had an opportunity, they, they send letters discussing this. That tells me, I, I've been in this town for a long, long time. When I get that kind of response, that tells me people in this town know what's going on on this. So we're not doing this in a vacuum. We've had plenty of time to talk about it. So pushing it down the, to, you know, and, oh, well, I might not be here, you know, I want to be here for fall town meeting. What about the people that aren't going to be here in the fall? You know, do we have a summer town meeting? And do we have a Christmas Day town meeting, so we're all home for the holidays? You know, we don't do things that way. Back in the day, there was one town meeting. It went forever, it was two or three days in a row, but. in a row, but we, what about those people that were still somewhere else? Oh, well, I mean, we don't do business that way. You know, people has, as a citizen, we have obligations as citizens, you know, you should vote, you know? You can't complain if you don't vote. Well, town meeting is the same time every year, and if you're going to be in Florida, well, maybe you might want to make your residency in Florida and vote while you're down there. But we can't control our town by a handful of people that are going to be here or there or everywhere, because, you know, well, oh, it's school vacation, or, oh, no, you know, I have a vacation to wherever that month, so can we reschedule this town meeting? That's not the way we do it. We've had plenty of opportunity to discuss this, we'll continue to discuss this, even at town meeting, we'll debate it. But I think we have a pretty darn good bylaw, and if there's an objection to any one line of it, then let's discuss that. I understand town council has to have a weigh-in on a few issues. If that becomes the biggest problem, then okay, obviously, we don't have a bylaw that's ready. But from what I'm seeing, between now and March, we have, there's no reason to put a placeholder in town meeting. We've done it before, we've tweaked town meeting bylaws or articles days before town meeting. We don't have to do that. I think we've got a bylaw that's pretty much ready without being tweaked. So that's my two cents worth.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Or 10 cents.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other comments from the board? I'm not going to be recognizing the public at this point. So with that, may I have a motion to defer the accessory apartment zoning amendment to the 2023 fall special town meeting, to allow for appropriate and necessary review by town council, and to provide more time for additional focused and comprehensive public engagement.
So moved.
I, yeah, okay. I want to make sure it's on the floor, so we have, we have a motion.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
She, she, so moved.
I will second it. Now we can discuss.
Discussion.
Just a question through you to Kathy?
Yes, of course.
Jim does make a point. If we advertise it, I think I know the answer to this, but if we advertise it, set it, put it in a place, we still can withdraw.
Well, sure, you're just going to all the work to prep for something that then gets withdrawn, and then we have to do it all over again for fall town meeting.
Have you, have you had any input from any of the selectmen or the town administrator, since we all work at the behest of the selectmen?
I have not heard anything official from the Board of Selectmen. I did hear from one Board of Selectmen member about hearing from people outside of, you know, all around the town, with some concerns about being away and not being able to hear and talk about this, and not being able to be at annual town meeting, and wanting to be at fall town meeting. Don't know who it came from, she didn't have copies of it, as I just told you who it was. Sorry. So I don't know how the Board of Selectmen will feel about it. We could ask it and see if they can do some, some decision-making on Tuesday night, but I think lots of times, they might want to go through, if you guys don't pull it, they may want you to go through the public hearing process. Well, what did the public say at the public hearing process to get that information? In prepping for the public hearing, we would need to be sure that we had all of that mapping data correct, we had all the, the list of the different lots, so we have the numbers and the percentages. We'd want to make sure that we had some frequently asked questions, so that we can identify, you know, answers for people and present it to them. And then we'd have to do a lot of advertising, I think, for that public hearing, to make sure that we are reaching outside and to all the different members of our community, and see if they can't come out and let us hear what they have to say. So there's, there's just, that's what's going to be done. And if that's something that you guys want to move forward with, then quite frankly, I'm not going to be working on the LCP RFP, which is something I want to get to. So what don't you want me to do? Because I cannot continue to do five jobs.
And I, I might add that the number one goal of the Board of Selectmen is the LCP. Number one. And, and you know. And you're behind already.
And we have a lot of stuff going on with the Riverwalk Park. We have a ZBA meeting tomorrow night. We've been making a lot of great progress on that. We have to prep for requests at annual town meeting for that, in addition to me being part of the team that helps with wastewater, which we're going to be talking about a little bit at the next meeting. So there's a lot of big things that are coming up.
And the open space and rec plan?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, and the open space and rec.
I want to represent those nice, those fine folks as well, since I'm a part of it.
And the grant we got for the hazard mitigation plan, which has expired, which we are going to need to be soliciting, and that's going through my department as well. So there's a lot of things going on in a relatively short period of time. So I would hate to lose momentum on the Riverwalk Park. I know that many members here have shed a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, as, as have I, to move that project forward, and I think we really need to be sure that we get the funding that we need at annual town meeting, so that we can move that project forward.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion on the floor, that has been seconded. Mr. Good, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Vincent, certainly.
Just to clarify the motion, because it was a minute ago, is this to postpone it until the next?
Special town meeting, fall.
Okay.
Fall town meeting.
Thank you.
And again, the language is related to the appropriate necessary review by town council, and to provide more time for additional focused and comprehensive engagement with the public. That is the motion.
Madam Chair, can I follow up on, on that?
We're still in discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
I do think it's important, from what Mr. Saban did say in his 10 cents, that, and also with what Mr. Goodwin said, that if this motion does pass, then when we all arrive in September of 2023, the good Lord willing and all those cliches, that there shall not be any complaints from anybody who is listening to this video anytime ever in the future in the history of watching this video, that they were not included, that they were not informed, that they were not, you know.
Engaged?
Engaged, thank you. If I hear, or if, if we are led to believe that there are members of our community who have, do not feel properly engaged, six, nay, seven months from now, then I will say boo, boo to them. That does not mean that there may not be a world circumstance or a life circumstance that I can't predict here in the end of February of 2023, but I do have a lot of faith in both Ms. Williams and this board, as well as Mr. Saban indicated, a lot of other community groups who are pretty fired up about this topic, to now take the next seven-ish months and continue the engagement process as we follow it to its logical conclusion to be at fall town meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, certainly, Mr. Saban.
We're always going to get people to stand up at town meetings and say they did or didn't. And that, good luck to us, I hope we don't get that, but I guess the next part of that becomes of, how many more times do we need to discuss this between now and September, so that somebody doesn't say, you didn't talk about it enough times over the last six months? So rather than complain, they're going to say, we didn't speak enough. So do we need to have a general, do we need to talk about this one, two, five more times? What, what's going to satisfy the thirst of those that are complaining that we're not talking about enough? Do we need to talk about it one more time, or 50 more times? Because as far as I'm concerned, we've talked about it plenty. But again, I don't want to, like my colleague is, I don't want to hear people whine that says, we didn't talk about it enough. So what is enough?
Ms. Britta?
Jim, I agree. I think that, but there's talking, and then there's talking. I think we have to have, like, a workshop or something where we can actually interact, for example, this issue with the variance that came up tonight, that now, all of a sudden, the town council says, hmm, you know, maybe they are eligible for variance. That is a profound effect on this. I don't fully understand it. I'm certain that most people in the audience wouldn't understand it. That's the kind of thing we have to sit down with maybe J and have him explain to us the practical effect of that change, and discuss it with the neighbors, discuss it with the residents. Remember, there's only one group of residents that have skin in this game, and that's the single-family homeowners. So maybe setting up, I don't know, like they did in Dennis, a special team, setting up a workshop once a month, having more interactive engagement with, during a public meeting. But my view of what we've done, although we have talked about it, it has not been meaningful discussion. We haven't resolved anything. I mean, we say things, like I say, I don't think that, you know, ADU should be granted in perpetuity. No one on the board agrees with me, but I do think that's the kind of thing we have to discuss with the, so they know why I think that way. And then we have to get feedback from them. I think that's ridiculous, Susan, or I think that's a good idea. That's the kind of thing, I think we need more meaningful discussion, not just a series of meetings where we talk among ourselves. I think we have to engage, because this is a big change. This is an important bylaw. It affects our community and will affect our community for a long time, and I think it, I think we need to know from, I don't think they're saying we don't know, I think they're saying we don't really understand the impact of all of this. And that's our responsibility to help them, although I do agree with you, I mean, I feel like, an educated citizen, we as a government's best friend, and we have an obligation, as we develop this, we have more of an obligation than just board members, we have an obligation to explain to the citizens the impact of some of this stuff. They may read about it, they may say, oh, ADU, but they don't understand the practical impact, and I do think we have an obligation, more of an obligation than most boards, to explain that to the residents. And how we do it, I'd welcome also, I think, you know, workshops are great, but there are other avenues that, that, that we can use. I just think we have to give it a little more thought. But I do think that, I agree with you, we have to keep talking about it. How we talk about it, though, I think we have to really refine, so that we get the most out of those conversations, and not just say we had eight meetings, oh, we had eight meetings, but if no one really got anything out of them, that's just checking off a box.
Mr. Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I read through a lot of these, all of those letters that came in, and here's what struck me about it, was everybody, I'd say, it had to be all of those letters, said, I'd like to postpone this, and that was it. There was no question about, I have a question about a certain section of this, can you explain that to me? It was none of that, there was no thought, nobody has read this. I would suggest you read it. You can educate yourself, you're smart people, read it. But these, this vagueness makes no sense. We've been working on this board, coming to these meetings to get a document together, and here it is. This is it. If you have a specific question, ask it, we'll answer it, but none of these letters asked a question. Not one of them asked a question. That's your job. Absolutely, it's true. An engaged public asks questions. They just don't sit there and get preached to. It's a two-way street. If you've got a question or on a certain part, ask, we're happy to answer it for you. I haven't heard the question.
If I, if I, I have said, there'll be no public comment.
That proves it, thank you.
This isn't a public meeting, not a hearing.
At the discretion of the Chair, we are having an important discussion, I don't want to be interrupted. Continue, Mr. Vincent.
I think that was, I'd said what I was going to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rubenstein.
Me. I think what I, I think, I think what I heard, what I heard Susan saying, because I'm starting to understand this a little bit better, is whatever future discussions we may have, depending on how this, this vote goes, assuming that it does pass, it sounds like there needs to be a format change in these conversations. And I don't know what all those formats are. I mean, I know we've tried a couple, right? There was a workshop, I want to call it a workshop, I think that was the terminology.
Listening session.
Listening session, okay, there's lots of different, lots of different phrases. But that it feels like maybe what we could do at a future meeting, as soon as the next one, without taking up too much of, of anybody's time, but to maybe start to map out some sort of calendar with some sort of format or variety of formats that maybe are, are governed by a different set of rules, as evidenced by some of the frustration out there, because that is where, if I'm heard Susan correctly, where some of the frustration lies, is short of an official public hearing, which we're debating right now, the idea of having different kinds of conversations in different places, much less this one, in different, in front of different constituencies, sounds like the right kind of roadmap, and maybe, maybe not tonight, but maybe as soon as next meeting, we could start to, I don't know, map this backwards from September?
Yeah.
And start to say, well, maybe we do a meeting at the Realtors', and maybe we do a meeting at the next Village Association, is that?
That's too much for me in the summertime, I'm telling you, I'm not going to be there.
And I'm not, but, but, but I'm not, I'm not saying that that's good or bad, I was just saying in general.
Three meetings can handle this. We could have a meeting, a business meeting, where we ask the public to come and bring their questions about the language in the document, and not stand up and just say, I think we should postpone this because. Ask a question, and we will take your questions. If we can answer them that night, we'll answer them that night. If not, we'll come back to you at the second meeting with answers to those questions that we couldn't answer that evening. Then all the questions are answered, and then we can have a public hearing. It's that simple.
I think, I think if I may.
I think three meetings can do it, it doesn't need to be all this outreach.
If I, if I may, I think that our intention here was to do as much as we could, as quickly as we could, starting on November 16th. We've tried that. We never had a contingency plan anywhere that I saw on, well, what if we can't do it? We are now talking about that plan of communication. We need a communication plan, a calendar of events, and that's a great idea, Chris, in terms of how we approach it.
Trying to keep it simple on Kathy, is all.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that should, that could very well be a, a good item for discussion, should this motion pass, for next meeting, where we, where we map out what we think a communications plan might be for the future. But I, I, I appreciate the, the back and forth on how and when and.
The motion is still on the table.
And I would also like to say, I would also like to say, with, with real sincerity, the work of this board has been incredible, and our, our understanding of this and our work to make this be a document that we're comfortable with is not in question by me. It's just whether or not anybody out there understands it. And I agree, wholeheartedly, that's their job. But our job is to try to get, as, as, as best we can, our, our, make an effort to make sure they understand it almost as well as we do, that, and, and therefore, it, the product will have a much better chance of, of being successful. I think that kind of marketing, if you will, can only bring us to a place that's closer to getting something that's better than what we have. We, we just want something even a little better than what we have. That's all, I think that's where we're going. So any further discussion? Mr. Saban?
Just a couple of quick items. I want to remind us that the Brad and the housing people have had lots of discussions on the subject of housing as well, and maybe wait, one of the things, if, I'm not in favor of this motion, but should this motion pass and we do delay, then maybe we find a way to have a joint meeting with the housing advocates, as well as, you know, they've had plenty of discussion about housing and the subject of housing, and they might be able to, if you have these future hearings, I would recommend that we try to do it jointly with those that are already looking at the subject as well.
We have done that on, on others, on other subjects, yes, a very good idea. And quite frankly, with the zoning board of appeals. Any, any further discussion or comment? Mr. Goodwin?
Just a quickie. If this passes, I hope we kick this down the road for Kathy's sake until after the annual. So we're not going to deal with this and mapping or whatever until May.
Yeah, but we have, we have time to do a communication plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have time to get all the, the work, some definition of what we think the work ahead is.
I'm still looking at July or August or September for this, this outreach meeting, because.
The closer, the, quite frankly, the closer to special town meeting, the better.
And I think it's in October, not September, is it not?
Yeah, I think it is in October.
Yeah, I said September, only in that I was just trying to pick a, a point where.
So again, I hope some of the people who are going back to Florida for their 183 days to have residency are not going to be like, but, but it's after Columbus Day, or Indigenous Peoples' Day, I'm sorry. I was raised with the word Columbus Day, what are you going to do? No, we're bringing it, okay?
Yeah, 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 we're going to bring it, we're bringing it. Any further discussion? I'll take a vote. I'll take a vote. Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Susan Britta? Ms. Britta? Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
A reluctant aye.
Mr. Saban?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Me? Aye. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Yes.
Okay, in the, following the conversation about outreach and discussion, I will volunteer and welcome anyone to come with me. I would like to call the chairman of the group that did it in Dennis, so that we don't reinvent the wheel, and talk to her to see about what were the hot button issues, what were, you know, what should we pursue, what was the, what were the things that the citizens were really interested in? Just to get an idea of how they did it. I know it took a long time to do it, and they had a special group that set up that did it, but they had an excellent communications outreach. So if nothing else, talk to them about how did they get to their citizens?
Now we have time to do that.
Yeah. So that would be something I think would be a good first step, because they did, regardless of what you think, how they did it, I mean, the product, they had a terrific outreach to the citizens. They had massive participation with virtually every segment of the society down there, business, health, contractors, everyone.
I think that was all that was on our agenda for this evening.
Many minutes.
Many minutes?
You've been very patient.
Sorry, post-surgery here. I'm Christine Greeley. I've been here in town since 1981, served on a variety of committees, including a committee that looked at how to format town meetings, or what we could do to get more active participation. Have felt very strongly all along that that's an exceedingly important component part. However, you can't force people to come. I mean, you can try to do things. I do want to concur and absolutely agree with you that you have done yeoman work in terms of trying to put this forward, and having been following the work you've been doing and everything, I do commend you. I think that's a very, very difficult process. There's obviously a lot of different thoughts about the whole thing. There's certainly a community out there, maybe people out there, so no ADUs. There's been the issues about not by right. But that, one of the things that I think, and clearly in listening to you tonight with the fact that I think Kathy and the people in this town, employees do amazing work in terms of trying to get things ready for our town meetings, and I, and I do want to commend them. But it's clearly evident to me that there are some things with town council and that that do need to be addressed. There were a couple of things in reviewing, and I've been reading, you know, various materials you've put out over the while, from even from tonight, there were a couple of things that were concerning me that I thought that as you go forward with having to talk with the town council again, is there any mention or anything in terms of septic? Because one of the things that all of our rules and laws in this town and the permitting have to do with the number of bedrooms for bathrooms and that, and in the meantime, we are going through a major crisis in this community in terms of what's going to happen on septic systems, on wastewater planning and things like that. And I do think that a lot of this needs to be, you know, really very looked carefully taken look at. Secondly, Ms. Greeley, if I may, if I may interrupt. We appreciate your, your, your interest in asking these questions, because we want some questions, but...
Written ones?
I'm sorry.
Is it maybe some written ones?
Yeah. Written ones as well. But my, my, my point is, we've made a motion to, to, to put this for special town meeting, and your, your questions now, I, we can't answer them. No, I know you can't. What I'm pointing out are some things, if you really want public feedback, I'm pointing out a couple of things that as you talk to town council in the next little bit...
I appreciate that. That's why we're going to have a communications plan with public comment and questions, just like that are the questions that we would like to have you bring.
Okay. There's things that are, that are cited that in today, with, with your highlighting and everything else that I have some questions on that I would like, I don't know if you need me to talk specifically with Kathy.
Pass them along to Kathy.
I was going to put them out in the public, because as I said, I do think the commitment to public discussion and to raising comments needs to be a real commitment. Sorry. In other words, for this to go forward, for the understanding and the belief that people do want to work in partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no hands.
Thank you, Ms. Greeley.
No virtual hands, Madam Chairman.
And no, no hands, okay. Anything else on this? Next on our agenda are meeting minutes from February 15th. May I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Saban?
So in our minutes, there seems to be a special section dedicated to the discussion brought by one member of the board, but no other relationship to other people's discussions. So I'd like to ask that that paragraph be struck, or that we add additional supporting documentation that other people had with regards to objections and other issues that there are brought up.
Can you be more specific, Mr. Saban?
In the bottom, it says during the discussion, page three of five.
Okay, sorry. I just want to make sure we're all looking at this.
Last paragraph, it refers to a particular member and that particular member's concerns, but nowhere else do we talk about other people's individuals.
So noted.
So I'd prefer that we strike that whole paragraph.
So we will hold the minute? We will hold the minute?
Can I just make a point?
Yep, you may, Kathy.
The reason I did that is because there was the consensus of the board, and I felt that there was one member who did not go along with the consensus of the board, and she had felt that her comments may not have been reflected in these minutes if I hadn't said that. I'm not going to go through these minutes and identify every single person. I'm not going to do it.
I'm, I'm not asking you to do that. I'm asking you not to ident, I mean, so what has happened here, and I know you're a busy person, but we have talked about one individual's issues with regards to consensus, but we're not talking about others. So my suggestion is, don't talk about any of them, or talk about them all, but you can't break one person's objections out and not talk about somebody else's affirmative issues or objections to something else.
That's the consensus of the board was the affirmative issue.
So my, my whole thing is just take that paragraph out, but...
Just decide now.
Just my personal...
You don't need to defer. You guys can decide whether you want to take that paragraph out or rename it to say, "One member noted something."
You can strike my name. Doesn't matter. You can say, "One member."
Jim, before we, just before we strike it, usually when you do a Supreme Court decision, the people who vote, you know, X and Y have their say. What I'm hearing from Kathy is the, the part that...
The dissenting argument.
That's what I'm saying. Do you want to put in something on there that Susan Britta, lone dissenter, or something along those lines? Or do you want to just strike it?
Well, I, I express my, I mean, I'm okay if you take anybody's names out, but if we start saying this individual had this to say, then we better say what others have to say. So I mean, you've got to see both sides of the story, and she's got enough to do, I agree with her. She doesn't have to give us every word that everyone has, but if she starts picking out one individual's comments and concerns, then we've opened a box that we have to have the other side.
All right. Why don't we put during the discussions, lone dissenter, Susan Britta noted? How about that?
I think, no, no, I, I...
I'd be in favor of saying one member.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I'll, I'll make the motion as amended.
What is the amendment? Sorry? Taking out Susan's name or putting lone dissenter?
Insert one member.
One member.
Okay.
I will second, I will...
How far do we want to take this?
I will second, I will second the amendment to the motion.
Okay. So who made, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I will second the new mo, it's a new motion. My bad.
I made the new motion as amended.
Okay.
And we'll just...
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
I'm staying.
And Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Crowley, yes. Thank you for that, Mr. Saban. Any committee updates?
Yes.
In the course of the last four days?
Yes, we, we have to end this, well, we should end all meetings on a high note, and since we're having a special meeting, I am happy to say that after two in-service professional days on Monday and Tuesday, the 27th and 28th, for the new teacher, for the teachers of the new Dennis Yarmouth Intermediate Middle School, students will be enjoying their first day of school in the beautiful new building on Wednesday, March the 1st.
Oh, nice. Wow.
And while it doesn't, it didn't hit the initial target, to be in on March 1st is truly, and I want to say this to everybody out there who's listening, a victory for the young people of both towns, and I'm very, very proud of all the hard work of the fine people on the school building committee, both school and the school committee in general, as well as those that ultimately saw the right path, which is the new school. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, can I, a couple of quick, my grandson went the other day, and he's like, over the moon excited. I'm wondering, is there going to be an open house for the community? Because I'm dying to see this building.
There will be, but in, in, a little bit later in the spring, and I don't, it is not clear. In fact, I'm pretty sure town meeting will not be in the new school because...
Chairs.
The chairs, right. So again, these are, these are the fun, the fun and games of building a $100 million project in the year 2023. The chairs are not in the auditorium yet, but everything else is.
Close to California.
But to answer, but to answer Mr. Saban's question, there will be, there will be some public tours and the opportunity for the public, not just at town meeting, which hopefully will be maybe the fall town meeting, to actually get some nice tours of the facility. And I believe the fields will start to get used later this spring, depending on how everything grows in or not. Thank you. Nice.
Oh, right.
And the new traffic pattern. Please be aware.
Yeah, February 27th, right. Any other committee updates? Okay.
I, just a quick one.
Jim? Mr. Saban?[1671.11]